I call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the communication following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Alan Green.
Here.
LaFleur.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Yark.
Here.
Emily had notified us a few weeks ago that she wouldn't be able to make tonight's meeting out of town, so a motion to excuse her from tonight's meeting would be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Was been made and supported, is there any discussion on that? Hope she's having a good time, a lot warmer weather, I think, where she's probably. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. If you'd excuse me for a second, I've got to figure out how to get my phone to shut off. There we go. Okay. All right, we go to approval of minutes for the City Council meeting of March 21st, is there a motion?
Motion.
Support.
Was been made and supported, any discussion on the minutes for March 21st? If you're not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items, if anybody would like to speak on any non-agenda items. We will move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, you have a change?
I do have a change, item number five I would like added, or request that you add that. Vector combination sewer cleaner repair.
Okay. City Council, anything? A motion to amend would be in order?
So moved.
Support.
Was been made and supported, any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have five this evening. The first one is consideration of approving the request to conduct the National Day of Prayer. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider a request from the Richmond area pastors to recognize Thursday, May 5th, 2016 as the National Day of Prayer. In previous years, the city have recognized the National Day of Prayer by allowing the area pastors to publicly pray in front of City Hall. Pastor Ugly is here tonight, if you have any questions. Also, the Richmond Rotary Club in the past years has sponsored pizza for a luncheon afterwards, and they are doing that again this year.
Very good. Pastor would like to fill us in on what's going on?
Yeah, we're going to have the National Day of Prayer here, instead of over there this year.
That's right, I didn't even think about that, it's been over there for so long.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're speaking, instead of being on Main Street, it's at the new City Hall, for those who don't know, over on 32 Mall Road by the railroad track.
Yes.
Yeah.
And hopefully the noise of the train won't bother anybody.
No, but fewer.
But on behalf of the pastors, we'd like to thank you guys for your support in doing that, because you know, you always try to look at things that you can do to try to help the community and improve the community, and this is one of the things that we feel from a spiritual standpoint that we can do, and it's nice to know that you guys are supporting of that, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you, thank you for all your hard work on this each year, too.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation recognizing Thursday, May 5th, 2016 as National Day of Prayer. Further, that members of council and other city officials and the public be invited to publicly pray in front of city offices from 12:20 PM to 12:40 PM on this day.
Support.
Was been made and supported. Any discussion?
I would just like to thank Pastor Ugly and all the pastors that participate in this every single year, and it's always fantastic, and just the things that are shared and discussed, and it's just, it really is a great opportunity to bring the city closer together.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question on logistics. Says in front of City Hall, like it's always been in the past, at the old location. Are we still, is that the plan, or have we got that far?
We hadn't got that far, I was going to talk with Pastor Ugly. My thought is we have that nice grass area out in front of City Hall, to the west, to have a nice, it'd be a nice area there, to have it outdoors, weather permitting, obviously. If you end up with inclement weather, then we have a lobby that's a little bigger, or even the council chambers, you might end up moving it indoors, but to try and continue that tradition of having it out front of City Hall. And then, you know, like I said, to the west is kind of a nice grass area that if there's good weather, it could be there.
Yeah, I was just kind of wondering, since in the old location, we get a lot of walk-by people that would come and join, and here, if we're in front of the door, it might not be so noticeable.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, you know, get the biggest bang for the buck, and it's a very important thing to do, so, just trying to figure out.
Sure.
If we get extravagant, put up a tent out front, I don't know, but...
Well, hopefully we can get some notice in the paper, too. Maybe our voice newspaper can make it clear that this is the new location from City Hall's move.
Correct, correct, we can do that, and also, I know Pastor Ugly always brings a banner, and we could like, instead of kind of stringing it along the awning there on the side of Old City Hall, we could maybe put it out more towards the road, so that if people are going by, they see that.
Okay. Anything else? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We hope for good weather. Item number two is consideration of approving the special event request, tent sale Richmond Flower Shop. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving a special event request from Alan Trisse Maniachi, the owners of Richmond Flower Shop. As you may recall, the applicants are remodeling the old physical therapy building at the corner of Division and Main. They are actually hoping that they will be in that building by the time they get to this. However, if something happens and they're not in that new location, they will still need to use the pocket park there next to the banquet hall. And with that being public property, as part of the municipal parking lot, they'd need council's approval to use that. So we're kind of having this item on the agenda just kind of as a failsafe. If they are completely at the new location, that location would actually be handled under administrative review, like we handle tent sales for Kroger or other businesses in town. So, we are still requesting that you approve it tonight, in the event that they're not in the new location.
For clarification purposes, the motion that you've recommended has just the address. Would you want that second paragraph, which would have the present address of the business, or Veterans Memorial Park, in absence of an actual address? Do you want that part of the motion, do you need that?
That's actually, that second part is what is giving them permission to have it there.
Yeah.
So I guess, yeah, it probably should be, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the tent request from Richmond Flower Shop located at 69-001 Main Street from April 25th to May 23rd, 2016. The tent shall be placed from the location denoted on the attached map number one. If the business has not completed their move, then the tent would be allowed adjacent to the banquet hall within the Veterans Memorial Park and location previously approved, see map number two.
Support.
Was been made and supported, any discussion? It's been a nice look, they've done a very nice job of making it look nice, and I'm sure the new location will stand out even more in that corner.
Any other?
Yes. And, you know, wish them well in their new location, feel a bit of possibly us being flexible on some of their events, help grow their business, and allow them to move on to a larger location. So I think the city trying to be reasonable about businesses as they try to develop, has hopefully, you know, been fruitful for them. And for the city as a whole, getting another increased business.
Cleaned up that corner, that's for sure. Anything else? Any comments from the audience? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of appointing a council liaison to the Recreation Board. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider the appointment of an ex-officio member on the Recreation Board in accordance with the Recreation Board bylaws. Mayor Ricks is currently serving in that position.
If council would drop the rules of our normal business and talk about this, is that okay?
Yes.
Dennis, all right, okay. I would like to do it again. And I did receive a letter, or an email from Emily, that if I did not want it, to continue to do it, she would like to have it. I know Jamie has mentioned in the past that you would go in that position also. So that is all I have heard so far. So, given that, if we can go for a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Mayor Tim Ricks as the City Council ex-officio member on the Recreation Board with an expiration date of March 31st, 2017.
Support.
Was been made and supported, any discussion? I appreciate that, Jamie.
Absolutely, thank you for serving on that.
I like to try to make every meeting, I can't make every single meeting, because sometimes there's other conflicts, but for a number of years, and we seem to work to well together with them, so, appreciate that. Any other discussion?
And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye? Against, motion does pass. Thank you. Item number four is consideration of approving the township fire contracts. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving the city of Richmond's fire contracts with the three surrounding townships, Casco, Columbus, and Richmond. Although the last contract ended June 30th, 2015, the city and townships have been following the contract for this current fiscal year, 2015-16. The current contract language has been pretty much the same for a number of years, and the contracts are based on a five-year run average, and the townships and city pay a percentage of the operating cost based on that five-year run average. We also then pay a flat fee of $200 per run, and currently $10,000 per year towards an equipment fund. During the discussions, obviously this year, we had hoped to kind of increase the amount that we contribute to the equipment fund, so although this is technically a four-year contract, what we're asking is that the next three years, the last two of those, we will up that $10,000 to $11,000 in fiscal year 2017-18, and $12,000 in fiscal year 2018-19. The only other change, and I laid it on the table tonight, the current contract doesn't have any out clauses. Normally, a lot of our municipal contracts have like a 90-day out clause, letting people get out of the contract. With that, the Casco supervisor had requested that we consider some language that we put in there, that if we change kind of the nature of services provided, that would drastically impact the five-year run average that we at least agree to sit down at the table. Now, we don't agree that we will change the contract, but at least we sit down at the table. Without an out clause, they just felt that that was important.
Again, for clarification, if council would make a motion to include the language that appeared on the table, would the recommended motion be good enough?
Yes.
Okay, you're considering that as a recommendation from the administration?
I would ask that council consider that on behalf of the township, yes.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2015 through 2019 fire contracts with the motion on the table, with Casco, Columbus, and Richmond townships, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Support.
Was been made and supported, discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions about this, because how, I guess I would clarify, I need clarification on how it will change their run average. So how will they, how will the cost be affected? Like, so if we...
For example, I guess their concern is that we currently run medicals within the city.
Correct.
And that's, the last 10 years, if you look at, in the email that I sent out tonight, are, everyone's costs have been pretty much the same for the last 10 years. If we choose tomorrow to stop running medicals, that would automatically then increase their, it would drastically reduce our five-year run average the next year, and they would then like the chance to sit down at the table.
So how would that though change the cost, their cost?
Because they pay a percentage of the operating cost based on what percentage of runs we have.
Okay.
So the last 10 years, our runs are based on X, and their runs are based on X, and if you look at the last 10 years of contracts, pretty much, we can all project out what our costs are going to be. So we could, we could change that based on what we do with our runs, and they wouldn't have a say until the end of the contract.
Okay.
And that's their only concern, because...
I understand, I guess I'm, I didn't, I feel like they're like, holding us hostage in a way, but I don't think that, I hope that's not the heart of their intent.
I don't think it is, I just think they realize that by doing different things, we could impact and increase their cost, and they haven't changed what they're doing. I see what you're saying, Jamie, and from their standpoint, a lot of our contracts have like, you know, hey, if any party gives 90 days' notice, you can opt out of the contract. There's not that language in our current fire contract.
Okay.
And they're aware, and I had a long conversation, couple, different long conversations with Supervisor Ruben App, and he understands that, you know, they are, the city is subsidizing the fire department based on our choice to run medicals.
Like most everything else that we do here in the city.
Exactly.
That's part of doing business, as far as I'm concerned, to a point. It's part of doing, because we do it in our parks and recreation, our library, fire, our police will go out on a serious call. I mean, it's just kind of how we historically...
No, and I understand, I understand that, I guess, and...
Yeah. Yeah. But I, I don't see anything wrong with it either. It's from their side, it's a protection for their people. On our side, it's, you know, they're helping us to maintain a great fire department, and we all benefit from that.
And actually, one interesting thing is the language as written. Had that language been in the contract back when we chose to do, start running medicals, we could have said, hey, we want to sit back down and talk about what a medical is charged as.
Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I have a concern about the language.
Okay.
In the contract, we use, the city is the city and the township is the townships. This language, the city fire department changes the types of service provided to the municipalities, that similarly change a municipality's number of runs. You know, it's using city and municipalities, and it actually doesn't give us the option as the city to come back and reopen back up. But I think the language actually has to be consistent with the rest of the contract.
City and/or township versus municipality, is that...
Well, the way it's written is it's services provided to the municipalities, which would imply that this only allows them to open up.
And I, and I guess, and we can change it, I'm no problem, I was using municipality in the broad sense of the term, that we're all municipalities, whether we're a city or a township.
Except we're not the, it refers to the municipality as the receiver of the service.
Yeah, see, we're, yeah.
And we are also a receiver of the service. I just think that the, if the city fire department changed the type of service provided to the city or the township, that significantly changes, changes a city's or township's number of runs, the municipalities, I mean, I think city slash township should be both, because I think municipality gets a little...
And I have no problem with that.
Okay, that's, I think there may be some ambiguity in that, and I just make it clear that we could bring it back to the table also, if it changed.
Yep.
So what is it that you're, what term are you trying to, or would like to change here?
All the places that are city municipality.
Okay.
All the places that says municipality should be changed to city or township name. Because that's the language in the contract already, we already refer to ourselves as city, and then there's the townships, that's...
Okay.
It just makes it clear that either party could bring this back. And I would support the motion.
What if we then change the third word, which says if the city slash fire department? What if it would read if the Richmond Fire Department? Because now, if you're going to use municipalities and call it city, and townships.
That would make sense as well.
It would make more sense if we dropped the city.
Drop the city off of there.
I think that's...
Richmond Volunteer Fire Department, change, or Richmond Fire Department.
Yeah.
Changes the types of services provided, the cities, the city or townships.
And that would cover if we were to make a major change here also.
Right.
Or if they made a major change.
Right, right. There were, there's no ambiguity as to who, that we're all, either party could bring it.
It's clear.
Okay, thank you.
Clear. And, let's see, Dennis?
Dennis.
You made the motion.
Yep.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Chief, do you have any comments you need to make?
No, I thought Mr. Moore did a fine job in the presentation we gave on March 17th.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments? Okay, back to the table.
I do want to, you know, thank staff for trying to work with this, I mean, this is something the Fire Equipment Fund, Equipment Committee has brought up, is that we are not collecting enough in the Equipment Fund contribution to pay the long-term costs, and moving this starts to move us in the direction of trying to make that whole.
And that was clearly laid out to, the townships, the night we, the evening we met, as well.
Thank you.
And it was nice to have those discussions with the Fire Equipment Committee, and Alan also talked about the realization that any change with the townships needs to be somewhat incremental due to the way they fund, two of them fund the fire depart, their fire activities through trying to bill residents or the person involved in the incident.
Maybe if the state would give us our allotment as they used to, we wouldn't have these issues.
Somebody should do something about that.
Somebody should do something about that. All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of, oh, item number five is the added item for the agenda, which is the Vector Repair. Mr. City Manager?
The City Council is scheduled to consider repairs to the city's 2003 Vector Combination Sewer Cleaner, or what we refer to as the Vector Truck. This piece of equipment is heavily utilized by the DPW for a variety of tasks, including catch basin cleaning, sewer cleaning, and water main repairs. In March of 2015, we had taken it in for routine service, and were informed that there were two issues with it, the front hose reel bearing and the rotor pump. At that time, we had repaired the front hose reel bearing. However, they had recommended that we use the rotor pump as long as it would last, and they didn't know if it'd last two months or two years. It lasted a year, but that it wasn't going to change kind of, you know, hurt the truck in any fashion, so by replacing it a year later, we're probably going to get another, you know, year out of, out of that. The Jack Dohany Company is the state-certified vendor for maintenance on that piece of equipment, so we are asking that we waive the purchasing ordinance requirements due to sole source, and approve the repairs to JDC. Jim unfortunately is on vacation, or he would be here to answer specific questions on the truck, but it is a critical piece of our equipment. When we have a water main break, especially in a roadway, it limits the amount, the size of that hole, impacts traffic, and things like that, so...
Very good. Is there a motion?
I move to waive purchasing ordinance requirements due to a sole-source supplier and authorize the replacement of rotor pump to Jack Dohany Company for the estimated amount of $13,005.13.17 cents with expense charged to appropriate line item, Equipment Repair System Expense Sanitary Sewer Fund.
Support.
Was been made and supported, any discussion? Pretty much an emergency repair as far as that piece of equipment goes, especially this time of year.
Kind of, we were debating that on Friday afternoon when Jim brought it in, on whether to bring it to council or do it under emergencies. Certainly, this time of year, it's kind of half a dozen one, six of the other. Seeing that we wouldn't be able to take it into the place until today, we felt we could bring it tonight.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's appropriate, it needs to be taken care of, and we said, we'd hate to be without it. It's not like we have a lot of other places to reach out to for another, for that truck.
Any comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motions, or I'm sorry, roll call vote, we got a waiver here.
Green?
Yes.
LaFleur?
Yes.
Ms. Stravich?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Yark?
Yes.
Alan is absent.
Motion passes. Moving on to City Manager's comments, sir.
Just my apologies, we clearly have a valve that's gone bad on our HVAC, or as I should say, is not functioning properly, so it's a little warm tonight, we're getting that taken care of. And that is all I have tonight.
Thank you. We move on to council comments, Jamie?
Nothing tonight, sir.
John?
Nothing tonight.
Jeff?
Two things. One, I want to thank staff for the Pound Road public meeting. Both as a council member and a resident of Pound, I mean, obviously, there's going to be a lot of work done on that road, but I think it was very informative to bring the residents in, give an idea of what was going to happen before the shovel goes in the ground, and so they could prepare for it. And I like the fact that there's going to be updates on the website, so we can get through it as painless as possible.
I already had a resident come in today, and I helped them register on our website for their texts and emails. They had missed a box checking, and messed them up, but I walked them through it.
The other thing, Councilor Ms. Stravich, myself, and Councilor Alan, all went to the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference. I appreciate everybody attending, you know, the Michigan Municipal League being an advocate of local control, and the fact it's a great educational opportunity to see what's going on, and meet with other local officials, get ideas, to bring back and make us better local officials. So I appreciate that opportunity, and the council continuing to fund that education.
Good. Dennis?
Just want to remind everybody, spring sports are getting going, and watch out for the kids, and enjoy all the activities. Get out and see the games, whatever they may be.
Wickle?
Yeah, I'd concur with Councilor Yark on the MML Capitol Conference, it was very good. It was nice to have representation there from three Richmond City Council members. Also, there was a lot of emphasis on showing the revenue sharing discrepancy, and how most of, well, pretty much every, all cities in the state of Michigan had been impacted very negatively. And they had a very interesting graph where it showed all the other states in the country did not have that happen. So, and then kind of a follow-up to the email that we got today from City Manager, and East Point's leading the charge to try to go back and actually potentially file a lawsuit against the state to get that back to where it's supposed to be, because it potentially could be an illegal action that they took. So, I know they're looking for some funding, so we might want to talk about that if they're, I think they need $30,000 to do that, and some communities have already contributed to get that fixed. So, I know we're very short on general fund extra, but we might want to, if they're short, and maybe to show that our support, it might be something we might want to think about doing, just to help get unity and show that this is, and luckily, we've been in good shape with that. I mean, we got hit pretty hard, but we were able to weather the storm, where some communities, you know, are in much, much more dire straits. So, and then also, congratulations to Councilor Yark, a nice article in The Voice about his run for state representative. So I know the table here fully supports him, so hopefully the community will as well. the community will as well, when it's time to go out to the primaries and vote. That's it, thank you.
And I was, after the email that we got today from John, I was gonna ask him if we couldn't put that on the, either the next agenda, or whenever, in the next month, if we can get enough information from those who are involved in it already, and bring that back to council, and what our legal abilities are also, as far as using our monies to further that cause. Okay. Go over the calendar. Today being April 4th, the first day of yard waste collection will start tomorrow, on the 5th. Again, the spring recess is going on at Richmond schools, so watch out for our kids around town. Cable Commission will meet at 7 o'clock on the 12th here at City Hall. The Planning Commission meeting that normally would have been on the second Thursday, has been moved to the third Thursday, at 7 o'clock here at City Hall. We have a, what is it, next regular scheduled city council meeting is on the 18th here at City Hall at 7 o'clock. Tiffa will be meeting on the 27th of this month here at City Hall also. Little League's opening day will be on the last day of April, which is the 30th, it's a Saturday, so I was a good time over there. Also wanted to reiterate our approval tonight of the National Day of Prayer, will be held on May 5th here at City Hall, and I believe that is at 12:20?
12:20 to 12:40, and the new City Hall address is 36725 Division Road.
Very good. There was one other thing. The, that's the other thing, some people I've heard have asked, on May 23rd, which is a Monday, is the beginning of the recreation programs for residents, the registration for the summer programs, and that will be conducted over on Festival Drive at the Community Center. That is May 23rd, starting at 8 o'clock in the morning?
Uh, yes.
8 o'clock in the morning. Limited number of spaces for some of those activities that are very popular during the summer.
Yes, and I, Mr. Mayor, I know we're kind of emailing back and forth the rec guide right now, so it should be out probably next week or the week after.
Good, very good, very good. Things are starting to look good again, other than the slight snow that we had over the weekend and the dipping temperatures, but they say in another week, we're gonna be up to 70 degrees, so, I was thinking, maybe with the thermostats not acting properly in here, maybe we could get a little sand, and have our own spring break right here. It's 78 degrees in this room right at the moment, so it is a, a little warm, we're not flushed because of anything other than the heat in here.
I thought it was all our hot air.
Yeah, 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 well, before you sat down, it was at 74. All right, we're moving on, right?
Yes.
Okay, there is no closed session tonight, is there any other business of the city council this evening? Being that, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
What's been made and supported, all, there is no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Passes, thank you for being with us.